We ready? I'll start. Called to order the Monday, June 16th meeting of the Conestoga Valley Board of School Directors. Want to welcome all of you that are here and those that are joining us online. This is our second and general meeting of the month where most official votes are cast, many of which are listed on a consent agenda, which includes items which are routine or have been discussed at our work session last week. Our meetings observe all legal and policy requirements to the best of our understanding and ability, and all agendas and available related public documents are posted on the district website. Will you please join me to pledge the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Martin, will we have attendance, please?
We have eight school directors present tonight. Mr. Genzel is absent. We do have a quorum in place.
Are there any changes to the agenda for anyone? Any deletions, additions, or corrections?
Yes, we had a update today. The consent agenda item U, the student handbook, the handbook was uploaded today.
I'm sorry, would you give me that letter again?
U.
U. Oh, okay.
Student handbook. And then action discussion item G, policy 918, was updated today due to an editing error.
If those are the only corrections, can we have a motion to approve the agenda? Mark's not here, somebody has to do it.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All those in favor say aye. Any nays or abstentions if not the agenda is approved, and we will start the meeting with board commendations. We would like to recognize and extend a big thank you to middle school paraprofessional Joe Gardner. Mr. Gardner is a paraprofessional in schools' foundations programs and assists one of the program's students during band. Mr. Gardner plays the same instrument and attends practices with the student. Thanks to Mr. Gardner for handcrafting a stand so that a student can continue to play the instrument comfortably. Thank you, Mr. Gardner, for your outstanding work and dedication to our district. A shout out to several pre-K students in Mrs. Giralt's class at Leola. Of the students in her class that were screened for kindergarten readiness, all five were proficient for the overall performance level. Three were proficient in their letter ID, and two were advanced in their letter ID. Congratulations to the Fritz students who were the top four finishers in the annual Math 24 tournament. Third runner-up, Brandon Time. Second runner-up, Jason Groff. First runner-up, Carter Johnson. And the 2025 Fritz Math 24 champion is Luke Kraszewski. And if you look at that picture, I don't know who is who, but they're awfully proud of what they did. I would like to add one more kudo. It goes out to a group of Dr. Hartman, Mel Upton, the A-1 task force, and our entire staff. If you remember, we were fortunate to have Rachel Mann, a national-recognized consultant on starting AI in the public schools. And she came and met with us, and in return, she was so impressed with what we've done that she's invited Mel Upton and Dr. Hartman to join her when she addresses other school districts. It's always satisfying to know we're doing things so right. Superintendent's comments.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Happy Father's Day, one day late for all the fathers out there. I'm going to start out by introducing us a few new staff members this evening. I'd like to start with Hannah Chadwick. Hannah, can you stand up and give a little wave? All right. Hannah will be joining us as a first-grade long-term sub at Fritz Elementary School for now. Hannah is a CV alum who has her bachelor's degree in education from Millersville. This past school year, she has served as a long-term substitute for both first grade and as a reading specialist at Fritz, so she's a familiar face to us, as well as serving as a building sub throughout the year. So she's been around, and we're happy to keep her here this year in first grade at Fritz. So the next two introductions are for new hires who we approved previously, but they were unable to make previous school board meetings, so we're bringing them in this evening. So first would be Olivia Hess. Olivia, could you stand up and wave? Olivia is going to be joining us as a high school English teacher. She is also a CV alum. So Olivia has her bachelor's in English education from Millersville and also spent a semester studying abroad in Spain. She also serves as a girls' lacrosse coach for CV and volunteers as an ESL instructor for seeds, so welcome, Olivia. And finally, we have Brody Bonadilla. Did I say that correctly?
Bonadilla.
Bonadilla. All right. Brody is joining us as a high school business teacher. So Brody is not a CV alum, but we're not going to hold that against him. He has a bachelor's degree in management from the University of Pittsburgh at Greensburg, where he also played baseball, and he received his master's in business education from IUP. And most recently, he has served as a long-term substitute in special education and in biology with the Connelesville School District in Western PA. So welcome, welcome east, Brody. So that concludes my new hire announcements. I do want to mention to the board and to everybody else, just a reminder, the next two days will be our administrative retreat. We're very excited to have Arbener Institute come in to do some leadership development training with our entire ACT 93 admin team, not just our educational administrators, but our principals and also our operational administrators in the district. So we're just continuing to work to try to build a common framework and a common language for leadership with our team. So we're excited about the next two days. We think it'll be a great opportunity for our professional growth and to get some professional development for the folks who are typically responsible for other people's professional development. So we're looking forward to that. That concludes my report.
To the new hires, we want to welcome you. Are there any board comments on district activities? Is there any correspondence from the secretary?
There is not.
Well, I have one. I received this from Nathan Mains from PSBA, just thanking us for joining. I would read it to you, but I can't decipher his handwriting, so you're welcome to try to do that for yourself. When you see this, you'll know what I'm talking about. There are some words, I had that for a couple weeks, and I still haven't figured out what some of the words are. At this point in the meeting, is there anyone that would like to address the board on an issue on our agenda? Is there anyone here from CBEA to address the board? Is there anyone here from CBEA to address the board? Or any other employee groups? Then we will move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have a comment or question about anything on the consent agenda? I have just one, and I'm not sure. I think it goes, I don't know if it goes to Dr. Mann, whoever does the student handbook. I had a question for that. I'm not sure who to address it to.
That's a collective effort, so just pose your question, and one of us will feel it.
The question is, well, it's a much a question as a concern. When looking over all the various choices for discipline, one of them was a lunch detention. I personally have a problem with the idea of a lunch detention. I think every student deserves half an hour of relief from lessons. And in lunch detention, it specifically says that they work with them on their lessons. I'd like you to reconsider that. Especially the kids that are struggling for some reason, the last thing they need is to have to give up their lunchtime, too, where they can't just relax. I think most of us in our jobs, if they took our lunch away and told us we always had to work through lunch, we wouldn't be real happy, so. I just wanted to mention that. If there aren't any other concerns, I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda? Or not? Could we have a roll call? Oh, I'm sorry. Could we have a roll call, please?
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Mrs. Kapka?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Ms. Trowbridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Groff?
Aye. That makes it unanimous, am I right?
That is unanimous.
Okay. For our action discussion agenda, before we get started, I wanted to offer a little bit of explanation. Passing this budget and the tax is one of the most important, as well as impactful things, of all of our responsibility. In May, we agreed unanimously to pass a 2.5% budget. We posted it, including we posted the tax rate, and we filed it with the state. Sensing a lack of surety among the board, I asked our final approval, including review. Second thought, maybe I should have left well enough alone, but that didn't seem terribly honest. What came to us last week was not the support for our decision I had expected, but basically a full review of the issue, which resulted in a decision change for some of us, perhaps proving the lack of confidence in our original vote. Tonight, we are required to make a binding decision. As we've said before, we can change the budget, but what we pass tonight on the tax rate cannot be changed. Considering, I can't recall this happening before, I think we need to explain ourselves if we're going to go forward with making a change after publicly posting an earlier decision. I just think that's only fair. Unfortunately, we are working with an even number of board members. Now, I have no idea how anyone's going to choose to vote tonight, and I don't expect anyone to cast anything other than an honest vote. Hard to read, isn't it? But there will be no tie vote. I want to make that clear. So, Mrs. Hunsier, do you have anything to add this evening?
I just have a few updates for you.
Okay. Just what we need, another budget update.
May I comment, please?
Excuse me?
May I comment, please?
Yes.
On that vote that we did in May, we did that with the understanding that we might want to change that interest rate.
I think I made that announcement at every meeting we talk budget, just so you understand.
It just sounded like you.
Oh, no, no, no. All I'm saying is this is the first time we ever have done that.
Yep.
And it's been posted, and people have read it, and I think we just need to explain.
Mm-hmm.
That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, and from May to June, we were hoping that we would get some updated information from the state, the governor's budget, but we have not at this point. So, so obviously, today, we have to finalize our budget. We're required by June 30th. And we have the two scenarios, as Mrs. Groff said, a 2.5% millage rate increase and a 2.75% millage rate increase. The Act One index is 4.0%. We are anticipating that to decline over the next several years. That's based on several different formulas that the state has come up with on, basically, the state and federal economy. What's important to note, too, with regards to that is that because we are accepting the Ready-to-Learn Adequacy Supplement, we can no longer file for exceptions that we might be eligible for, and that would be specifically special education. So, anyway, I bring that up to keep it in mind for you that we always have to continue to look at the budget down the road, five, 10, 15 years down. And since we just passed another $15 million bond issue resolution, I wanted to point out what the amount of debt that we do have. And over the next 30 or so years, we have to pay off principal and interest totaling $230 million. Our average annual debt service payment is about $7.9 million. And working with Scott Kramer and Ally Machi from Raymond James, we are able to, the way they've structured the bonds, is that if we have some continued bonded bond issues that we need to pass for future renovations or construction projects, that our debt is staggered, so that we can try to keep it at that level rate, though, with only slight increases. So if you recall, last week, I mentioned to you that I had a very intense hour-long phone call with Standards and Poor's Bond Rating Agency. And they go through a whole scenario of different questions, trying to evaluate our management team, what our plans are fiscally. Do we have robust policies in place to ensure that we're investing all of the taxpayer funds properly, to ensure that we have debt service limitations? You know, there are certain parameters that we cannot go above with regards to our debt service. So no matter what, we want to keep our, the district in a very, very secure financial condition. And they have, what they do then is go back, and about two or three days later, we get an updated phone call, an updated report from them, providing us with our bond rating. Our bond rating is a double A negative, which is still very, very strong, showing we have strong capacity to meet our financial obligations. And many of our peers in the area have the same type of rating, too. So that is a good rating. The next slide, I just wanted to provide to you some of their comments that they had written in their report, specifically stating that we are forward-thinking and we prioritize long-term planning. We have very large documents from back in 2016, 17 regarding our future renovation and construction plans. This slide to the next one, current and future continued challenges, this is nothing new. You've heard me stating this for the last couple of months. You know, we're still facing increasing cyber tuition costs, transportation costs, and obviously the unknowns with the state budget and how much money we're going to get. All of that bringing us down, then, to the scenarios of the 2.5%, 2.75%. So since last week, we didn't have any further budget adjustments to be able to make. So if we increase our millage rate at 2.5%, we have a $1.3 million deficit. If we increase the millage rate to 2.75%, it's a $1.2 million deficit. And that, as I've mentioned before, is because we're only including 50% of the Ready-to-Learn Adequacy Supplement. We have no guarantee at this point that we are going to receive that amount. That is not taking into account any potential cyber charter tuition reform. We don't know if that will pass or not. Hopefully, it will at some point, but I don't know that it would become effective for July 1st. So, anyway, what I want to point out, too, when we're looking at the deficit, is how do we, how do we fill that gap? Where does, where do we, how do we balance the budget? We currently have a little over $15 million in our fund balance, which we also refer to as like a savings account. So we, with each deficit, we chip away at that little by little. And what the recommendation is from the Standards and Poor's Bond Rating Agency is that our deficit should be about 15% to 17% of our total budget expenditures. If we go with either of these scenarios here, we are still above the 15%, but that's chipping away at us little by little. And to put things also into perspective for you, if we increased our millage rate all the way up to the index of 4%, that would still not balance our budget. Our budget would be balanced with receiving the other 50% of the Ready-to-Learn Adequacy Supplement. So we still have to keep not just this year in mind, but the future years, and maintain a very strong, healthy fund balance. So those are my comments for this evening. I will certainly open up to any questions.
Adele? We are earning interest on the $15 million, and that's part of our revenue.
Yes.
Isn't there a loan where we're limited? Is that the loans on the building constructions where we're limited to only getting so many percentage interest out?
Oh, okay, I believe you're talking about when we're investing the bond proceeds. Yes, there is a, the way we've structured our debts, we have to pay down that, those bond proceeds within like three years, 30, was that 36 months, to be able to avoid arbitrage. That's what is called arbitrage rebate. What it means is that when, in an environment when our interest rates that we're earning are higher than the interest rates that we're paying out on the debt, we're not allowed to make money off the bond issues. We have to return that money, then, to the IRS. So right now, we should be pretty good with the, the last bond issue was in 2022. We're in pretty good shape with not having to return any of that interest because we're spending down on that. And then the same will be true with this $15 million that we just borrowed, because we'll be using that to wrap up or to pay for the Fritz renovations.
And that's a change in all. There was a time when we did make money off of arbitrage. Do you remember when that was changed?
I do not remember when that was changed.
There was this time, we did quite well with that.
Yeah.
You know, borrowed the money at one interest rate, invested it another, and it made a huge difference.
Yes.
I don't much try to understand why they object to that unless it was being abused.
Probably, in that case, may, perhaps there was a school district that was borrowing money and then earning interest on it, but not spending it down. Then, you know, you're paying the interest to the bondholders. It, yeah, it's probably abused.
That's a shame we lost that.
Do you remember what our budget deficit was for last year?
For 2425, it was 900, just right under $1 million. And what my most recent projections are showing is that we're probably going to come in at a $600,000 deficit.
Just kind of dumb this down. So if we keep falling short, and we keep pulling it from the general fund to make up that shortage?
Yes.
That affects our future bond rates for construction.
Yes.
Okay, and we're already looking at $230 million that we're paying back, and that would increase the interest rate, so that would blow that out of the water.
Correct.
Okay, so there is a downside.
Yeah, pay now, pay later.
Okay.
We would have to come down pretty low before it affected our credit rating, wouldn't we? I mean, we have a long way to go before that. And I noticed in the list of things that affect the credit rating, that's about the only thing we can control. There are a lot of things
Correct.
that are outside of our control that could end up hurting our bond rating.
Part of the reason why they changed us to a double A negative was not anything we're doing at this point, but looking at the surrounding economic factors and economic influences, and also looking, too, at our level of debt. Let's say the economic factors stabilize, and, but we kept increasing our debt without increasing our reserves, our savings account, our fund balance, then that could potentially also cause another decrease.
We have that pretty much software, don't we now, where we keep our debt level
Yes.
the same?
So one of the interesting things was when we were going through all the PSBA policy reviews, we are, we had a policy for debt management. And when PSBA came out with their recommendations, they did not have a policy on debt management. I made sure that we carried that over and included with another policy, and that's one comment that Standards and Poor's really kind of patted us on the back for that, that we have a debt management policy.
Now, I think we have a right to be proud of the stability
Yes.
that we maintain in our budget in general.
I have a question. How do we put money into the general fund, our savings account? Where does that money come from? Like, if we keep falling short year after year after year, that's potentially going to be zero. Like, where do we get extra money to put in that?
The only, the only way we can maintain our fund balance is just by having revenues here equal expenditures instead of dipping into the general fund. Yes, it's $15 million fund balance, but that can decrease quite quickly, especially with not knowing, are we going to continue to get the same level of funding from the state? We don't know.
Okay.
But yes, a lot of unforeseen's can take care of that quickly, too.
Mike, if you're acting remembering that the last four years, have you run a deficit?
We did. So this year and the previous year, in '23, '24, we intentionally budgeted a deficit. Our reserves were a little too high because you have to kind of balance that with taxpayer increases, but you're running a surplus. So we wanted to balance that down, and we're at a level
Just last year?
Those two years.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Three years ago, we actually had some transferred money into our capital reserve fund, just to provide a cushion there. We had an excess in our general fund. We transferred it over to kind of level out the general fund so that we could have some, the capital reserve fund building up a little bit because of all these capital projects. And Ken Johnson could certainly attest, last year and the year, or this year and the year before, we've had some surprise equipment failures, which were rather costly.
And any questions? Okay. Would anyone like to make any statement or any comments before we move on to a vote?
Actually, can I ask one more question?
You can ask, many would you like?
I asked this last week, but to just make sure it didn't change. In your professional opinion, the 2.75 definitely makes you more comfortable?
It does make me more comfortable. That, that 25 percentage point difference over the next five years accumulates up to about $796,000. So it does have an impact. And when we're trying to look at, you know, these debt numbers, too, it's, to me, that's money that we could be trying to, let me, let me put it this way. If we don't have consistently millage rate increases to minimize the deficit, we are going to have a jump at some point.
Right.
And then, now, throw in the scenario, we can't apply for exceptions because we're getting the adequacy supplement. So if that Act One index comes down, and it's been as low as 1.9%, and that was about 10 years ago. But if that index comes down to 2%, then we cannot go above 2%. And then we have to start looking at where, what areas do we cut? And I, my philosophy is to try to build a budget and present you with a budget that does not affect programs at all.
That index, does that rely on the general economy?
Yes, state and
Something that we have absolutely no control over.
We have no control of it. The state average weekly wage is one factor.
And there's a point where no matter what we do with taxes or budget beforehand, that will still have the same impact.
Correct.
Now, I remember those days of little indexes.
Yes, yes. So now it's kind of a, okay, the Act One index keeps going down, but then if our special education costs continue to increase, then we can't apply for that exception because
Yeah, I just meant that that's an issue that we can't impact at all. Any other questions? Any comments anyone would like to make before we take a motion?
Just one comment to piggyback on what Adele said, but I cannot explain the budget process the way Adele can, but I put my full trust in her. But I just would like to remind the board, you know, the other, other But I just would like to remind the board, you know, the other, other thing is we've, we've committed to roughly a four percent increase in salaries to all of our staff over the next five years. And that's kind of what brings fear in me, you know, salaries and benefits are eighty-five percent of our expenditures. So that's the biggest chunk of the pie of what we're spending money on. And we're, we've committed to about a four percent raise annually. So you, when you're only raising taxes a certain percentage, you can't sustain that by always dip it into the fund balance. I, that, I know that's a very general concern compared to all the intricacies of, of the budget, but that's the way I look at it. When you look at what our number one expenditure is and what that is increasing on an annual basis, that's definitely a factor that plays it. So just to add to what, what Adele shared.
I agree on that. I saw that on there and I.
Doesn't, doesn't that percentage compound just ever so slightly in the last three years of the contract?
It wavers. It goes up and, but it averages out to be about four.
Yeah, it averages out to be about four.
I see what you mean.
The current year was over four percent, twenty-five, twenty-six is going to be below the four percent, and then it averages out.
Any other questions or comments? If not, what we're going to do to try to make this a little more efficient, I'm going to take a, a, a budget to approve items A, B, and C because they all rely on the tax rate. So we're going to vote, once we do one of those, the others are set, so we'll make that one vote, depending, well, no matter what the motion is.
So you want a motion to approve items A, B, and C with the millage rate.
With a given tax increase.
With the millage tax increase of two point seven five.
I second it. We have a roll call, please.
Give me a second.
Didn't I just have a second? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought she was asking for a second.
Making sure I got this right.
So you're, you're doing the budget and the millage rate all in one vote? You're doing the budget and millage rate?
Budget includes the tax rate.
Yes.
Okay. And the next item in B is the tax rate. And that homeset farm set exclusion.
So it's.
Depends on the tax rate. They brought us two sets of papers tonight. But once we set the tax rate and the budget, the others will be the same. That's why we can take it as one vote.
Okay, all right.
Because all it does basically is repeat the tax rate.
Dr. Martin.
Hi.
Mrs. Fisher.
Hi.
Mr. Hurst.
Hi.
Mr. Tally.
No.
Mrs. Kapka.
Hi.
Mr. Eby.
Hi.
Ms. Trowbridge.
Hi.
Mrs. Groff. Vote passed six to two.
Six to two, so that passes at a two point seven five tax rate. So you can burn the other set of papers.
Okay.
That's fine. I will say this.
No, that's fine.
If the state comes back with a bigger number, I'm not going to forget this.
I, I, when we get the other half of that, of that money shows up.
I'm not going to forget.
Well, do you mind if I comment on that?
No.
Okay, so with.
I do.
So with the one, so at a two point.
It happens, it happens every year.
I know, but.
Every year we come back and we, we do this, and then, and then the state comes back and they, they want to put more money in the, in the education, and we get this big windfall gain, and it's all for naught.
I, I'm pretty confident the other half of that money is going to be there, too.
I, I am too.
But with the two point seven five percent millage rate increase, our deficit will be one point two million dollars. If we do get the other half of that Ready to Learn Adequacy Supplement, that'll drop us down to about a five hundred thousand dollar deficit. Again, I think that we, we don't know when that tuition, cyber charter tuition reform's going to come through, but just keep in mind, we pay out one point six million dollars in cyber charter tuition each year.
In what?
Cyber charter tuition.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that would take care of our deficit.
Would, and we hired people to fix that.
You have two bill, you have two potential bills out there, both, either of which could solve our problem very simply.
Yeah, I agree.
Mike and I have more confidence.
Yeah, I agree, I get it. You're still within two percent of a ninety-five million dollar budget. You can make that work.
I, I do want to.
No tax increase.
That's fine.
I do want to thank.
That's fine. I feel good doing it, though.
And, and our board secretary, Mrs. Martin, for going through all the work it took to do, to be prepared to go both ways.
I get it.
And especially after we changed. I know it was a lot of extra work, but I think our due diligence required it.
Sorry.
Okay. The next motion I need will cover items both D and E. That is the commitment and assignment of the fund balance and the suspension of the per capita tax resolution, which we do every year.
Make a motion to approve items D and E on the agenda.
I think we better, just to be safe, let's do a roll call on this.
Mrs. Fisher.
Hi.
Mr. Hurst.
Hi.
Mr. Tally.
Hi.
Mrs. Kapka.
Hi.
Mr. Eby.
Hi.
Ms. Trowbridge. Mrs. Groff.
Hi.
Dr. Martin.
Hi.
Thank you.
Can I ask, why have we been suspending the per capita tax? In how many years have we suspended?
Oh, my gosh, it's been what, about ten years now?
It's been about ten years. And actually, I remember at last year's meeting, you said, why don't we just eliminate it instead of going through this again? And that just popped back on my radar last week, and I didn't have time to look up what the appropriate resolution will be to be able to say we're eliminating it so we don't have to keep approving this every year. So I did remember that from last year, but I definitely will take care of it for this coming for twenty-six, twenty-seven budget.
I, I remember when we did that, and the idea was we, we need to keep that in our back pocket. You hit hard enough times, we, we may have to rely on that. Many districts simply got rid of it permanently.
It is.
Only a few that kept it, and we were one that felt, it's a small vote each year, and we always do it, and we would never activate an extra tax except in extreme circumstances.
Yeah. For the per capita tax, even though it's a fifteen dollar tax bill, we got more phone calls and more issues with that than we do about the real estate taxes.
That was what, was ten dollars a head back then?
It was ten dollars, and then there's another ta, another tax for five dollars. They just combined them for fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why we called it the nuisance tax. It was very time consuming.
It's still more work to make that a double vote, so we kept it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I want to thank all of you also for going through the budget process and appreciated the challenges, too. So thank you.
And our next issue is for Mrs. Hunsinger's annual raise as, as part of her contract. That raise that's listed there is three point six three percent, which is the same as what the TCS contract had. But I will need a motion to approve that pay raise. And it's based on her evaluation also.
I move to approve item F on the agenda.
I second it.
Do we have a roll call, please, since it is a financial decision?
Mr. Hurst.
Hi.
Mr. Tally. Mrs. Kapka.
Hi.
Mr. Eby.
Hi.
Ms. Trowbridge.
Hi.
Mrs. Groff.
Hi.
Dr. Martin.
Hi.
Mrs. Fisher.
Hi.
That was unanimous vote.
Okay. First reading of District Policy 918. Are there any questions or concerns about the policy? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the first reading.
Motion, Jennifer, for the first reading of District Policy 918. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed are abstentions. If not, the first reading is approved. And the last item is approval of Power Hub. Dr.
Well, good evening, everyone. As Mr. McGraw continues with his team to refine and implement Power School, we're coming across different items that will help us do that and enhance the experience of our, our students, teachers, and parents. One of those items is, is this Power Hub and School Messenger. And while this was not something we were planning on doing at this moment, as looking through what's being presented to us from the vendor and so forth, it makes sense to do this. It's a, it's a win-win-win, meaning those three groups, students, parents, and teachers, or actually, and administrators, will really benefit from this new interface. It allows us to, it supports one hundred and thirty different languages, as you may have seen in there. It works on textable interfaces for teachers to be able to text parents from their computers and so forth. So it allows enhancement of communication there. It also is, functions a little easier because it's part of the Power School system rather than something outside of it, so that's helpful. Also, it'll help us with integrating a number of the forms and documents that we already do. For example, eCollect is a, is a program that we use to create forms within the system. You probably filled some of the forms out online as parents and didn't realize, but that's what that is, as well as looking at things like Enrollment Express and so forth. Another product that will bring an enhancement is, it's called Safe Arrival. It's actually an attendance component. It'll allow parents to submit their excuses electronically, doctors and otherwise, so, which is nice. We currently do that kind of via email, but this is more secure and personal this way. So, so it has that enhancement. Let's see, what else is there to share? Now, there's, coming off the conversation from the budget, there is no budgetary impact this year. While it is in addition, I mean, so it is in addition, it's no budgetary impact this year because we're able to work with them to get some money back from discontinuing a service that we had, so that's part of it. Another part of it is we're working on moving the contract with Power School from November to July one. So we're, by making that shift is going to allow us to do that. So come next year, we'll see the, the cost of this, which is in line with currently what we're almost paying for the current product. And then next year, we'll work on getting rid of that, that product. Any questions?
Are we currently locked in, who do we currently use?
We currently use Parent Link.
And are we locked into a contract with them?
We are. I think it's a five-year contract.
Okay.
And, and we're looking at the, is it five?
It's five years. We just finished up year one.
Right. And so we're looking into a way of working out of that.
But we don't, like, are we going to be responsible for paying for those other four years?
Possibly.
So we broke out the, that contract includes the website as well as the messaging component. Obviously, the website is the bulk of that final site contract. We priced out with the final site, the messaging component, Parent Link, is about seven thousand dollars a year. I have a meeting lined up with them. We can't get out of it, but they have other options that we can put that seven thousand dollars towards if it's not going to be the Parent Link messaging system. So I have a meeting lined up with them to see what those seven thousand dollar options are.
To like in-store credit type thing, be able to use it for something else. We won't be losing that money and paying for two services.
It's just going to be, it's not going to be Parent Link anymore.
Right.
I don't know, it's going to be a website enhancement, so that's what I'm meeting with them about.
Any other questions or concerns? More information?
Yeah, just one other thing I just noticed here that is to share with you. One of the features is called Power Buddy. I'm not sure what they call it there, but Power Buddy. And it's an AI component, which will allow us to put in any document we want. For example, the student handbook, as, as one example. And it'll allow parents just to ask questions, and it'll give you the information, just like that. So any district document, policy, for example, if we load it in and teach the system, we have to teach it, it'll help with people being able to search our documents and find information. So that's a, you know, as AI continues to develop, that's a, I think, a good incentive or, or at least a good tool for, for parents and others looking for information from the district. Just wanted to mention that.
And that will be limited to just exactly what that document says.
Yeah, yeah. We, and limited to our documents. You know, we have to put our documents in.
Right.
And so the functionality of the AI allows people to search our, our, our documents. It's not going out on the web. It's not meaning going out and, you know, finding an answer from some other handbook or something.
There is an article in the Lancaster paper today about the, about something, getting people together and all they put their documents in, they hit AI to do whatever, and AI put in a whole bunch of, change things around to wrong information.
Right. And, and I think it's, not to be unattractive, but I think it's part of the challenge with AI as we continue to, as that continues to advance, you know, there's some shortfalls. I mean, it's not the end-all, be-all, however, it's a powerful tool, but there are things you have to be very careful with.
So what is the actual annual cost of this? There's a bunch of different.
The actual.
The contract reads seventy-four thousand, six seventy-nine.
Okay.
Right.
And we're currently paying what?
This is over, we're currently for School Messenger, we're paying.
Oh, for Parent Link, it's seven thousand a year, roughly.
Seven thousand a year. This is seventy-four thousand?
No. I don't have the contract in front of me, trying to see it.
According to this, the three-year total is ninety-one thousand, seven hundred. It looks to be roughly three, thirty thousand a year. Is that right? That's in the very first.
I looked that up and had.
Up at the top is where I'm looking.
Yeah, at the top of page.
Up at the, there, right there, the quote.
There's total license and subscription fees.
I can't, it's too far from me.
Sorry.
It showed the, the three-year breakdown.
It's over, it's over two years.
Where it's roughly around thirty thousand a year.
Okay.
So some of that was the, for the tool that, that replaces Parent Link, but some of it's the, the additional features like the.
Yeah, right. It's not just the.
Buddy.
Correct. The, the other features of it, we don't have to use, we don't have to purchase all those other features. It makes sense to purchase all those other features because it enhances the product itself. But the messenger piece of it, which is the School Messenger broadcast, and I believe the School Messenger two-way piece, would be the, the part that's equivalent to the, the.
Is that what we're voting to approve though, or are we approving all of it?
All of it. I'm recommending all of it, yes.
Are you wanting to add the trade-in services? That's an additional three thousand at the bottom.
No, I believe that is part of what they will waive for us. One of the things in Dr. Hartman, and maybe you can help me with this, part of, of, let me just, for a second. They waived that, and there was something else, Dr. Hartman, that, that we wanted them to waive, which they did.
There's some, when we were talking, speaking with Adam, some of the, some of the training and implementation costs, he was asking.
Some of the setup costs.
Some of the setup costs.
Right.
Because we're already a Power School customer.
Right.
So all these other features, other than the messaging part of it, we already have any different program, though?
No, no, like, like the, the Safe Arrival, we don't have that. The Power Buddy AI piece, we don't have that in anything else. The Power Hub Engagement piece that, that, the tool that helps pull all this together, we don't have that in, in anything that we have right now. My Power Hub, that is part of what we own. However, we don't have the language piece of it, one hundred and thirty languages.
Okay. So we're asking to go from, currently we pay about seven thousand, we're asking to up that to seventy-four thousand to get a better messaging along with the Power Buddy, the AI side of it.
Right, the attendance component of it, and, and the two-way.
Is what we currently have that bad to justify like all of a seventy thousand dollar increase?
No, that's.
Or is that unusable?
No, I'm not saying it's that unusable. It's not that. It's not that. This enhancement is, is that, is, is good. I, I'm not going to say it's, it's $74,000. I can't say that. But this, in looking at other districts that, that utilize this, it's recommended. I mean, we've checked with a number of local districts that have gone this way and they strongly recommend, they recommend it because of the, the enhanced interface as well as the supports to, to the community and the parents.
Okay.
It's $30,000 a year, right? Not, not $70,000.
Correct.
Correct. $70,000 for three years?
Yeah.
What exact, dumb this down. What exactly is this? Is this like on the app, you can message parents and teachers and students back and forth? Like, is that what it is?
It's part of that, yeah.
But the parents have to go in and physically open the app to see, oh, do I have an alert? Because I will say that's a PITA. So I'd rather get the alert in my email and then why have an app when it's in my email?
It's going to do both. I mean, it'll send email.
Well, then, why, why send message two different ways when an email works? So that's what I'm saying, like, I don't, I don't see the use of this.
Part of when, when we communicate with parents, asking parents, which way do you prefer to be communicated with? And so this gives us more functionality that way. You know, if somebody prefers an email, that's obviously a way we can communicate with them.
That's what I had an issue with a teacher. She said she could only message parents through this. And I said, well, I never, I'm not contacting you through this. So I said, yeah, I prefer email, but she never. So I was completely out of the loop of everything going on in the classroom. So saying that, I'm just worried about what should be done, what is actually being done, that there's a discommunication there. But I agree, like, we already have some, we're $7,000. Why don't we continue that contract? And then look at this for $7,000 versus $30,000. That's where I'm sitting, but.
I know through our conversations with Adam and his team, you know, and I, I was going, Adam knows this like the back of his hand more. And we were, one of our, one of our bigger, big-picture goals that, that we sort of have tasked Adam with when he came in to his position last year, we talk about it as a cabinet pretty frequently, is we, we have a lot of, one challenge we're facing is we, we have a lot of things in a lot of different locations in this district. That's a layman's way of saying, you know, we have this platform for this, you know, and, and so we are, one of our goals, one of the things we've tasked Adam with doing is really trying to bring everything under as few umbrellas as possible. And I, and he, this is, his efforts in, in doing that, and I think what they found was some of the interfaces with this, they found were a lot more parent-friendly than if they just now go into what Power School looks like. You know, it, it's going to, it kind of is a hub. One of the things this will allow for is everything to kind of make sense under, under Power School with how parents see it. There's more of it, like the dashboard that the parents will see is, is easier for them to navigate between different Power School tools and solutions. It also, we think, will eventually allow us to maybe eliminate some of those other outside tools that we're either using comprehensively across the district or maybe just tools teachers have found that, you know, teacher A might use this tool to communicate with parents versus teacher B uses this, like CSOL and different things like that that are out there. So what we're seeing, this is more of a big picture, trying to bring everything under, under the umbrella. As much, you know, I don't think you can ever completely bring everything under one umbrella, but trying to bring as much under that Power School, you know, column as possible because I think after we got over some of our initial challenges last year with Power School and we realized some of those weren't Power School issues, maybe as much as they were implementation issues here, where, where Adam and his new team were able to come in and be able to figure things out and troubleshoot things a little more effectively, and we realized, oh, maybe Power School wasn't the issue. And so now we're discovering some, some solutions with Power School that we think, now, let's give them a chance. Now we're, that we're seeing some success with Power School. So I know that's not a total explanation of every, everything this does, but through, when Adam came and proposed this to Dawn and I and, and Dr. Kozer, he had a really nice way of, of laying it all out and showing how these really lead to a longer, you know, tool of being able to get rid of things like ParentLink, some of our, I don't want to name it proprietary tools, but some of the other tools that we're using in isolation right now and bringing them all under one house.
And I would add that in year one, they're discounting it to the point that it's zero cost to us as part of this.
Can I make a suggestion for in the future? I feel like I need a spreadsheet. Like, what do, what do all these things really contain? Because I feel like there's more depth to it than what is being said right now. So that would be helpful to better understand what all these things can do. Because I have a feeling the AI tool can do way more than just help parents search something. You know what I mean? So that would be helpful information to have, to justify the cost.
Is that time limited?
Yes, in that.
What I'm asking is, could this be put off to the July meeting?
The answer to that is yes. I mean, it could. The, the challenge with that is it then is for implementation in the fall may be questionable because of the work that needs to go into setting these things up. I mean, I, I mean, it's your prerogative that we can put it off to July and get more information on it.
Why, why don't we do this? Obviously, the, the administration would like this software, but maybe next time we'll put like maybe a one, half a page little business case about why you want to have the software in, just in the future.
What's the board's desire?
Pros and cons, you're just.
Do you want to wait a month and get more detail?
That's my personal.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
I mean, we just put Adele through the wringer, you know, trying to pinch every single penny we can. And then we're having, in my opinion, having a hard time justifying, you know, a $23,000 increase a year. That's just my personal opinion if, if they can.
Well, maybe we put it through the wringer so we could afford this.
Yeah, we just increased it, the percentage mileage. So this is a rounding error.
Can I just get a, a quick response? Would everyone like to wait and get more information?
Well, I don't know if that's going to make a difference or not.
Don't look at me, nod your head yes or no.
I'm.
I'm okay with it.
I'm noticing that the subscription period starts tomorrow, but if it can be held off till next month.
It could be. It would just delay our implementation plan for it. But yeah, I think that date was chosen because we were. And we only have one meeting in July, I believe.
If I have no motion to approve it, then it gets put off.
You know what? I'm going to make a motion to approve it and then we can do a vote and it'll be either yes or no.
Okay. Is that your motion? Is there a second?
I'm not, I haven't made it yet.
I'll say it.
Okay, I made it.
Okay. I have a feeling we need a roll call vote.
We will need a roll call vote for this.
Yeah, I think so. This is to approve it.
I go first.
This is to approve it now, just so everyone understands what the motion is.
And move on with our lives.
Can I just comment? My vote will hinge on the fact that Adam has done such good work for us.
If you were going, you know.
I'm, I'm just saying that.
Parliamentary procedure does not allow you to explain your vote. We simply need a yes or no.
You're good.
I'm just saying that I've got a lot of confidence in Adam's work and what he's thinking.
Like I just said, parliamentary procedure does not allow you to explain your vote. We just need a yes or no. Could we have just a yes or no?
Right. But I don't know that it's.
So I have, I have a motion from Tally and a second from Diane. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapka?
Yes.
Mr. Ebby?
Aye.
Ms. Trowbridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Groff?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Hurst?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to one.
I, I will suggest this. Since Mr. Hurst is especially interested, and I think everyone else is to some extent, could you still bring us back that detail?
Sure. For Adam.
Yeah. Perhaps, perhaps bringing Adam in would be good. Does that make it hurt a little less? At least we'll get, we'll get the explanation that we understand better.
The bridge piece and all the IT back-end magic stuff.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Are there any concerns or questions or comments about the finance and operations report? The curriculum and instruction report? Dr. Hartman, is there anything on federal funds?
About this evening.
I will start with my IU report. I have posted it, with I have one addition to the training. There's a company called CM Regent. That is PSBA's insurance company and they are part of what we call our alliance partner, companies that, that work with PSBA. June 18th at noon, they're having a webinar. It's advertised as a safety committee investigation, supervisor investigation, and school administration investigation. I assume that means the investigations they do, not investigating those departments. They didn't make that clear, but I'm sure that's what it means. If anyone's interested now, please go online. I do not have an IU report. For some reason, we've started getting the information late. So you're always, as of now, you're always going to be one, one month later on my IU report. And the National Academy has not met since graduation. Mr. Hurst, do you have anything for some current technology center? Okay. And is there a construction team update? Anything from the vice president? Any other reports? At this point, would anyone like to address the board on any issue on or off the agenda? Are there any board announcements or comments? I would just remind you, for those of you that participate in advocacy, that this is one of those three weeks that they're pushing very hard for it. The dates for our next meeting are on there. We will have a, a retreat next week. Is there anyone that is not going to be at the retreat?
I have one.